I'm going to call a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Monday, July 25, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemantic Chamber, as well as via Zoom teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Lovering, and Alderman Lopez will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please indicate if participating by Zoom, why you're not meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. With the City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Alderman Cleese.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here via Zoom. My son and I are both not feeling well, so we're staying safe at home, and he's the only one in the room with me.
Alderman Camo.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
You have 12 physically in attendance and one participating via Zoom.
Thank you. I am going to turn the meeting over to the Chair of the Budget Review Committee for the public hearings, and then it'll come back this way.
Okay, this evening, we're going to be holding a public hearing on two pieces of resolution. The first is relative to the supplemental appropriation of $50,294.73 of FY 2022 unanticipated revenue into funds 7024 opioid abatement expendable trust fund. Is there anyone that's going to be presenting this? I understood that...
Mr. Cummings, I mean, Director Cummings is on that. It would be him.
We're finances. Rose, Rose.
You're on mute, Rose.
Good evening. Rose Evans, Comptroller. As the body of the legislation states, these are funds that are part of opioid settlement funds that is received by the state, and Nashua receives its proportionate share of those funds on an annual basis. In 2021, we created this opioid expendable trust fund, and we plan to supplementally appropriate these funds every year, as the amount we are going to receive is unknown. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do any of the Aldermen have any clarifying questions on this resolution? Again, it's state money that's given to the city that we are now allocating into expendable trust funds, so it can be spent for this reason. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll now open up testimony in favor of R 22045. Is there anyone in the audience or anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, I will move on. Any testimony in opposition? They don't see anyone, no one. Once again, testimony in favor? And once again, testimony in opposition? I will close the public hearing on Resolution R 22045 at 7:05 PM. I'll now open the public hearing on Resolution R 22047, which is relative to the supplemental appropriation of $75,000 of FY 2022 unanticipated revenue into funds 7058 park rehabilitation expendable trust fund. I don't think we're going to have anyone from the city to discuss that, but I think everyone's pretty familiar with that. I'm sure Alderman O'Brien is.
Yes.
Chairman Dowd, Tim Cummings is here if a question arises.
Oh, Tim, okay, go ahead. Director Cummings?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just ever so quickly, I'm here to ask for your favorable support of this piece of legislation. It came about, the main thrust of the funds are unanticipated revenue that we got from the sale of an easement off of Amper Street. I had a couple conversations with the Infrastructure Committee and how they'd like to spend those funds. The takeaway was that they didn't want the money to disappear into the general fund or labs, and ultimately wanted to spend it on long-term infrastructure type of improvements. In speaking to a couple of the directors, it became clear that the St. Andrews project rehabilitation had been waiting a while and needed some additional assistance. And so the $50,000, as outlined, was brought us pretty far down the path of getting us to the number that was necessary. Through a couple other unanticipated revenue sources, we were able to get to the $75,000. And I'm asking for your support this evening, so we can move forward with the St. Andrews Park rehab. Thank you.
Any of the Aldermen have any clarifying questions on this resolution? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing. Testimony in favor of R 22047. Seeing no one. Testimony in opposition? Again, seeing no one. Once again, testimony in favor of R 22047. Seeing none. And once again, testimony in opposition of R 22047. Seeing none, I will call the public hearing on Resolution R 22047 closed at 7:08 PM.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Alderman at large, Ben Clemmons, regarding the Ward Seven Alderman appointment. Questions relative thereto?
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Ward Seven Aldermen.
So tonight, we are going to talk to the candidates that are here, who are interested in serving out the remainder of the Ward Seven term, vacated by Alderman Cathy. What I'd like to do is offer you to come sit in the seat or at the podium.
Madam President, I was actually going to, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Point of order, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay.
I've noticed that the clerk, who we hope to confirm tonight, is here with his family, and we are about to do some lengthy interviews. Would it be appropriate to maybe suspend the rolls and do that appointment first?
If you want to make that motion, you can.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rolls and take out of order the appointment of the City Clerk.
You've heard the motion? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 yeses and 0 nays.
Okay, confirmation of Mayor's appointments.
To the office of the City Clerk.
It's Dan Healy, term to expire indefinitely. Mr. Clerk, or Mr. Healy, would you join us? You can have a seat for a minute. So tonight, we're confirming the Mayor's appointment of Mr. Healy, and I didn't know if there was any discussion, or we're just going to swear him in? We have to vote him in. I apologize. Right. Seeing Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Point of order. We did have a meeting to which Mr. Healy was present, explained some of his past history and his employment to us, and so therefore, I feel that he is more than qualified and adequate candidate, and I would like to support him and thus move his appointment.
All those in, I have to have a roll call. All those, would the clerk please call the roll on moving the question?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 yeses and 0 nays.
And that motion passes. So the motion is to appoint Mr. Healy as the City Clerk.
Thank you for the unanimous vote, and also for moving it up on the agenda. I appreciate that.
Okay, so we have to vote on his. Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Daniel A. Healy of Derry, New Hampshire, as the City Clerk for the City of Nashua.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on the motion?
We just moved it.
So we just moved it? Sorry. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 yeses and 0 nays.
And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Right here is good. Raise your right hand, please. Do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as City Clerk of the City of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire. So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
But it's all good. Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to give each candidate five minutes and then ask questions. After everyone's had an opportunity to ask their questions, I'm going to call for nominations, and then we'll vote. And we need to have eight votes to have a successful candidate. So the first on the agenda is June Karen. You can take Alderwoman Kelly's seat if you'd like.
I'm fine.
Oh, okay.
That'd be nice. Thank you. Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity to put my name into Phil Alderman Cathy's 18 months to go. Sorry to see that he was leaving. As you know, I have been the Alderman for Ward Seven for over 10 years and have worked for the city for over 45, so I think I have given a lot of time and effort to my community, which I love dearly. So when this opportunity came about, and I did hear from residents of Ward Seven asking if I would put my name in again, so I am submitting my application, and hopefully you will see favorable to put me back in the circle. And whatever happens, happens, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice, and I've got a cold, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anyone have questions? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll start with this, I guess. So what are your thoughts on keeping or not keeping the KEIF Auditorium?
I'm sorry.
So what are your thoughts on keeping or not keeping the KEIF Auditorium at Elm Street?
I have a lot of, I have a lot of opinions concerning the KEIF Auditorium. I think we have to really look at that facility. We need to see how much it's going to cost, what are the good and bad points of it, and the best way to utilize it, whether it's a theater or something for the youth or adults, how do we handle it now that you have a $25 million performing arts center in the downtown? So I think there's going to have to be a lot of give and take when it comes to that final decision, but I am sure that everyone will prevail, and we may not always get what we want, but I'm sure that in the end, it'll be for the benefit of the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Alderwoman June, sorry, former Alderwoman.
Thank you.
That's okay.
I believe I'm the only resident of Ward Seven here on the board, and one of my questions would be, one, I know full well you would have wiped the floor with former Alderman Cathy. You're very popular in the ward, and I say that with all due respect to the former Alderman. But my concern would be that there is a current potential candidate for this position who ran for election in Ward Seven as moderator, and he's won his last two elections, and he's also shown dedication to the ward, and I'm not, my, hearing that, what was your decision to come out of retirement, when we have someone else in the ward who's also seeking to come and be elevated?
Well, it's twofold. When I decided not to run, it was to take time and reevaluate in what was happening. When this came about, this opening, and I was asked to think about it, which I did seriously with my family, I felt that I could contribute for the next eight cycle, at least, if not longer, and be there. I know we have a lot of new Aldermen, and sometimes you need someone who has been around a long time to move things a little bit forward, to get people motivated, and then down the road, you have to think that you can't be here forever either. So no offense to Tim, because I know who he is, and believe me, I know he works very hard in the ward, because I did the same thing for 25 years, so. But sometimes you have to start slower than, you know, and you have to work your way up. So I just, I didn't feel that I needed to back off, you know, that the final decision is within the circle, not me making that decision.
I have one follow-up.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, and thank you for your response. So the one thing I hear, this last election cycle has been different than the most recent elections I've been involved with, that clearly the people in Nashua chose different people in the positions. Alderman Cathy was an undeclared person, someone who didn't affiliate with either, either party, and my worry, and it's nothing, I don't know you very well, other than we're neighbors, my worry is that, you mentioned being experienced, and there is clearly an old guard on the board, and I'm worried that the people of Nashua spoke as a whole and said they're not too keen on that right now, in this last election cycle, and that might change next election cycle. And it reminds me of this King of the Hill episode called Flush With Power, and everyone should check it out. It's very, I was watching it, and I'm like, oh my God, this is like my life right now. And Hank Hill gets elected to the county board because he doesn't like low-flow toilets that were installed by the county, and he had all this proof and evidence that he brought to the board, but at the end of the day, the other board members sided with the chairman, who they've known for 16-plus years, and they were no, had no problem expressing that in the cartoon that I was watching. And I'm like, wow, sometimes that's kind of like here. And not to say that's a bad thing, people are friends, it's fine, but I'm worried that some things might be stalled out in that type of environment. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, I think you, I think everything is, everything is different, everything is new. When you, when you come into this circle of wherever you are committees, I mean, I sit on the Board of Directors for the senior center for a long time, and there was a lot of very different issues that came up, and trying to work through it, the thing is, you don't have to like everything someone puts out there. Your job is to try to, I don't care what political party you are, I don't care where you come from, you're, the point of you being here is to do the right thing for your community. It's not about what this group wants or that, it's what you think you feel is right for the community. And you try to persuade others within your, within the circle to follow what you're doing, but if they don't, you don't lash out at them, because they've made that decision based on how they feel, and I think that's why I have gotten elected. I didn't always agree. People would say, you sit quietly by, but when you talk, you try to explain yourself. I've always tried to be very careful of what is said. That's why I stay off social media, because I feel that you get wrapped up in that, and you can find yourself in a place you don't really want to be. So my feeling is that I have seen over the years that people disagree, and then they get into angry arguments, and then they don't speak to each other, and that's not how you should be. You have to work together, you have to compromise. You may win today, you may lose the next three after that, but the point is, you've made your point across, and you've made people understand why you do. I've always told the people in the neighborhood, I can only do what I can do, and in the final analysis, my opinion is based on what I think is right for the city. I was not a big proponent of the performing arts center, but we came to a compromise, former Alderman and I, when we said that we wanted the private sector to come up with $4 million to show that the community was in on this adventure. No, it didn't really work out that way, and I wasn't too happy about it, but it proceeded. But when something else came up, and they said it was part of the performing, I, no, this wasn't. But I didn't get angry at the other people who decided to, you know, keep pushing it. That was your opinion, and that's okay, you know, because in Ward Seven, most of the people didn't want the performing arts center. And I said, if we can do it and do it right, let's do it, but we also have to make sure that the private sector, you, the community, we're going to buy in on it. I mean, that's my, that's an analogy that has stuck with me, because this particular Alderman and I, we didn't get along, we came from two diff, but he always came to me to ask questions, and I asked him questions, and we didn't always agree, but we were never angry with each other, and that's, I think that's what's important, and I think that's what I bring to the table. But, you know, like I said, the final decision is this group here, not mine, not Tim's, not race, or the other gentleman that has applied.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's okay.
Anyone else? Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to ask a question, something very specific to your ward, and that is the asphalt manufacturing. I know, I know it's probably a hard thing to discuss, but the, I personally feel that it's going to have a negative effect on your ward, and I'd just like to know how you feel about it, if you've spoken to any residents about it, or what would be your concern if it does go through?
A few people have mentioned it, but as I said before, why would we bring in an asphalt company in the middle of an area that we were trying to redevelop? We're trying to take the old shoe shop and turn it into workforce housing. That hasn't happened, but, you know, this is something that we've been looking at for a long time, and then you have a restaurant across the street. Why would you want a smelly old asphalt company near you? I can't imagine how they could do this. I mean, the last one that was in the city was up on Broad Street before they, city bought it, and, you know, we have the high school there, but it's not something that I would think is needed here. If you want to put it somewhere, put it out in the cow pasture, don't put it here, you know? I mean, it would be like them wanting to put it up in the 13 acres that they just opened up on Five Field Street. What a crazy idea. So, no, I would not be in favor of it, and you couldn't convince me that that would be the right thing to do for Ward Seven.
I completely agree with you. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your interest in serving Ward Seven again, and we will take up nominations after we hear from all candidates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tim Senet. By the way, just for the record, Alderman Sullivan joined us at 7:22 PM.
She set the precedent, so I'll stand too. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It's no secret to any of you that my name is Tim Senet, I live at 6200 Hill Street in Nashua's Crown Hill neighborhood. Since 2018, I've served the residents of Ward Seven as an election official. I started my election official career as a selectman from 2018 to 2020, and in, since 2020, I have served them as the ward moderator, currently in my second consecutive term. I point to my past as an election official as a great precedent for why I feel I'm qualified to serve on this board, why I feel I would make a good contribution to this board. If you are not aware, in the election cycles, whether it's municipal, state, or federal, we are required with our ballot inspectors to have an equal member or equal amount of each party. If we have four Republicans present, we have to have four Democrats. If we have seven Democrats, we have to have seven Republicans. Oftentimes, the party city committees can appoint ballot inspectors for us to use, but if they're not available, no longer interested in serving, it is on us as the elected election officials to take to, whether it's Facebook or to the neighborhoods, and recruit civic-minded residents to serve in that capacity, and that involves extending branches across aisles. We've, and that's something I'm very proud of in Ward Seven. We were left with very few people on board when I took over as moderator, and together with my ward clerk and my ward selectman, we have assembled a very diverse team of ballot inspectors who serve and volunteer. At times, they've stepped up to serve, when we've had selectmen resign their posts. We have Democrats, we have Republicans, we have undeclared, and they all bring something to the table, and they all are capable of working together. And they all bring something to the table and they all are capable of working together, setting aside their political differences for the betterment of the cause, which is to hold free and fair elections. In the neighborhood, I've kind of hung my cap on the fact that I've become the guy on Underhill Street that people come to when they want to know what's going on in the city. I have a neighborhood knows that I'm here most Tuesday nights with you folks and some Monday nights and Wednesday nights and whenever there might be something of interest on the committee meetings. And he often asks me, Tim, what's going on with the politics in the city right now? And I'm very proud of that. People are able to come to me when they want to know who they need to reach out to, to maybe get a stop sign placed on their neighborhood. And that's something that I'd like to carry forward and be their voice for Ward Seven. No longer would I have to point to them and say, well, go speak to this person, start here. I'd like to be able to just stop the conversation right there and say, let's see what we can do for you. I've had the opportunity to get to know many of you. I've spent many hours this year in this chamber as I've decided to take my, my free time that I have and dedicate more of it towards public service. Most recently, as many of you know, I was appointed by Mayor Donches to the Downtown Improvements Committee. I have not had the opportunity to serve on many meetings with tho, that group yet because, well, they only meet once a month. July was difficult and I was sick in June. But I've learned a lot from them about the going ons of downtowns, what their concern is with downtown. I think many residents would be interested to know that there's more that goes on in that committee than just barriers. It's the real nitty gritty of what makes downtown an attractive place to be. As I articulated in the Personnel Committee prior to being appointed to that committee, I think our downtown is on a cusp of something great. I think the completion of the Performing Arts Center is going to be a turning point for the city and I'm excited to see how the folks on that committee, many of whom are business owners on Main Street, are integral in taking Main Street to that next step. So I thank you for your consideration and I certainly welcome any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have questions? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Hello, Mr. Senate. So you answered a couple of my questions in your opening speech, so thank you for that without knowing what they were. But I'll ask, I'll throw the same question out as I threw out to Alderman Karen. The Keef, what do you think about the Keef Auditorium?
Resident Tim thinks that the Keef Auditorium is a gem to this city. I've had many opportunities to take in performances there as a high school student, as a young adult. Wanted to go see the symphony once and that's where I went. We have a very vibrant arts community in this city and I feel that the Keef Auditorium in its long-term capacity could be a very adequate complement to the Performing Arts Center, just as the Theater at Court Street could be a complement to the Keef Auditorium. The performances that take place at the Court Street Theater are not going to take place at Keef. The performances that take place at the Keef are not necessarily going to take place at the new Performing Arts Center. That being said, this board is in place to assess the details of that. I know that that's still at least a year off as we, as we move on with the new McCarthy Middle School and we assess what needs to be done with the Elm Street site. I'd still like to see more community meetings to see what is to be done with that site, but I do believe that there is a large bit of community support for keeping the off Keef Auditorium. We certainly would want to take a look at what the costs are associated with that. I've heard numbers high, I've heard numbers low, I've heard numbers in the middle. But standing here today, I am a proponent of keeping the Keef Auditorium, but I certainly would take into account any of the factors that come into play in that.
Thank you. Follow up?
Alderman Tebow.
Follow up. How do you plan on communicating with your constituents if you're in this role?
Well, I am a millennial, so I am on Facebook for better or for worse. These are the things you think about at night when you know you're coming to one of these meetings and you're not getting a whole lot of sleep. But I, I certainly would make an effort to have a central social media presence where folk could reach me. I think that's the first place a lot of people go. My phone number is available. It's no secret to anybody who wants to find it. I have plenty of access. I have a employer who's very forgiving with time, so if the need arises to step aside from my desk for a moment to take a phone call, I'm certainly able to do that. I also work from home two days a week, so I'm in Nashua two days a week and accessible to anybody that needs to reach me. I answer all my emails, whether people want me to or not. And, yes, I, I think I would be very accessible.
Thank you.
Alderman Timmons, all the women Timmons, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a question. Crown Hill area is very diverse and you know, you have a community center over there. I'm there quite a lot. And I wanted to know if you visit that community center, if you haven't, why not?
I have visited the community center. I, I appreciate a lot of the work that is done there. I've been to a, a number of events that were held there. My wife and I have taken very ill-fated dancing lessons there. My son loves going to the seasonal parties that are hosted there at Halloween and at the holiday season for Christmas. We've been to tie dyeing events there. And once or twice, I've even signed up to volunteer there. I don't think I had any services at the time that they needed for me to offer and unfortunately since, my time has become a little more constricted in that respect. But I, I certainly love having the community center. I think it's a, a wonderful use of a historic building. It's centrally located right in front of my son's elementary school. I'd love to see more done with it. I think it's wonderful. It's, I've basically been there since the beginning of it and I've been able to watch it grow and thrive.
Thank you. That's good to know.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Senate, very good to meet you and I, I read your, your letter of intent and I appreciate your, your service to the ward. Questions I have, pretty simple, pretty broad. Why you and why now?
Well, as many of you know, I was present for a lot of the discussion with the expanded outdoor dining. That sort of lit a fire under me. I deluded earlier that I've decided to dedicate more of my time to, to this community. I, I could go into a long-winded spiel about how since moving to Crown Hill, I've sort of found my home, that I, I've been in Nashua for 28 years, but this is the first time I've felt that, you know, that childhood sense of home. But I see an opportunity to give back to the community in greater capacity. Currently, I am able to serve 14 hours a day, maybe once to twice a year when we're hosting elections and I simply want to do more. I spend a lot of time following the happenings here at City Hall. That's nothing particularly new. I've spent more time coming here in person this year, but staying abreast of the happenings here at City Hall, whether it's by watching the meetings on YouTube or following along with the meeting minutes when they were a little more verbatim at a time, is something I've done for a long, long time. I told a few folks here that the first time I ever set foot in this chamber when I was, was when I was roughly 13 or 14 years old, when the, the project for the original David Dean Skate Park was taking place over on Bridge Street, where it is unfortunately no longer located. But since then, I, I've had a great interest in municipal politics, for lack of a better word. The, the work that's done here is the work that affects our neighborhoods. And I have come to unwaveringly love the neighborhood that I've landed in and I want to be, able to give everything to it so that in turn, where it's a neighborhood that my wife's family grew, grew up in decades before I was even a thought, it can be a neighborhood that maybe my son will want to settle in one day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Dow.
One question. How do you feel about spending city money to keep Court Street up to date or even improved?
I think Court Street is another gem, just like the Keef Auditorium. And I, I know that it's, it's suffering lately. I believe Alderman O'Brien used the phrase tired when it was first discussed. That being said, I, I have a great appreciation for the Keef Auditorium, sorry, Keef Auditorium, Court Street Theater. I attended presentations there when it was the American Stage Festival. As a kid, developed my love of musical theater there after seeing a production of Godspell when I was in the ninth grade. I think it's a, a great service to the youth to have a theater of that size and to, to look at the opportunities to, for the city to help bolster that building and bring it to something similar to what it once was, I think would be a very worthwhile endeavor.
Set Alderman down?
Yep.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to be rather boring. I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked Alder, Alderman Karen, and that is your opinion on the asphalt manufacturing.
I don't find that boring at all. Come on, that's the fun stuff. I do have a great deal of concern about the, the proposals being put through the Planning Board at the moment for the subdivision of the Temple Street property there. You had asked earlier whether we had spoken to any residents about that. That is something that I've done. And one of the most pressing concerns that I learned in my discussions with residents at Crown Hill is that they were unaware. This is something that's right around the corner and many folks that I've spoken to are unaware. I have met more concern than I have support for it in speaking with my neighbors. I did speak with one individual who, you know, ma, made the very valid point of jobs that would be coming from Westford, Massachusetts to Nashville and New Hampshire. And that, that's not an invalid point at all, but my bigger concern is how this facility would fit into the character of that neighborhood. And I don't think it would be an adequate fit for that neighborhood. We have more residential space surrounding that area now than I believe we do industrial. We have a new apartment facility that's in the process of being developed. They've already begun gutting through the Henry Hanger Building. To share something a little anecdotally, I grew up in Ward Three on the north end of Nashua, about three miles from the Anheuser Busch plant. If I could be three miles from the Anheuser Busch plant, step out every morning and smell malted barley in the air, then I have no doubt in my mind that somebody residing in the workforce housing that's going into the Henry Hanger Building is going to be able to wake up and smell asphalt being produced in their backyard. Additionally, Court, Commercial Street runs right behind that and I don't think a lot of people put much thought into Commercial Street because it's a, not a particularly dotted street to drive down, but what a lot of people may not realize is that on the other side of that stone wall, our residences whose addresses are listed as Commercial Street. My wife lived there when I first met her and there was a, I believe it was a granite production or gravel production of some sort there that had a garage at the time. Heard that from the living room window. If we heard that, the folks that are living there are absolutely going to smell asphalt and I think it's a great concern to put that there. We have many properties in Nashua that were unable to develop because of highly chemical production over the years. We have the Mohawk Tannery, the old, I can't recall the name at the moment, but it's at the backside of the Hills Ferry Road.
Beazer.
Beazer, thank you. Coppers, that's the one I know it as. Yep, Beazer Coppers. And in Ward Seven, we have the, the rubber manufacturing plant that took years to clean up after it shuttered in 2001, before they were finally able to open those Marshall Street apartments. And so that being an area that we hope to one day develop for a rail plan that they eventually want to place right in Crown Hill, I, I think that's a, a very ill-advised plan. And it's my hope that just speaking with folks in Ward Seven, that there might be enough tailwind to come out and voice their concerns.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you. For you or any other better running here, August 4th Planning Board.
Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Senate, Moderator Senate, Senate, whatever, depending on your using titles. So I heard a lot of things that you would support, however, would cost dissuade you on some of the projects that you would, you've said you would support tonight, whether it's the Keef, Court Street.
I would have an eye for cost. If you had the opportunity to read the resume that I provided, I, in my professional life, I do work in finance and accounting. Budgets, cost estimates are all a daily part of my life and so it's only natural that my inclination tilts that way. However, I also understand that in order to progress as a city, to grow as a city, to thrive as a city, that sometimes comes at a cost. And it's not going to be my first deterrent when looking at a project. It's something that I'd want to know about. I want to be conscious of how we are spending the residents' money because it is their money. They pay their property taxes and they have their concerns about how it's spent. I just want to make sure that we're spending wisely. But I feel that growth, prosperity, these are all wise and worthwhile endeavors that we shouldn't just shy away from due to the notion of not spending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. So I want to know what the most important thing, or I should say, what do you think is the most important thing or most important issue in Nashua currently and something that you care about? So line it up, right? Most important issue you care about the most.
That's a good one. The most important issue, I think, facing Nashua is the most important, important issue that faces Nashua every day and that's providing services that best serve our residences. I think that starts at the core of any municipality. Good schools, well-supported police, well-provided firefighters. My, you know, we place a great deal of emphasis on the fire department. My family, my wife's grandfather is a retired fire captain who built the house that's three doors down from ours. So we all have that reminder every day. But the services that we provide to the residents need to be first and foremost. We need to, and in doing so, we need to always approach issues that affect those departments, whether it's fire, police, streets, roads, schools, with a mind for bolstering the folks that make those work, whether it's our Department of Public Works, having the, the tools and the funding that they need to make our roads safe, keep our roads from damaging our vehicles. We need to attract and retain the best teachers that we can. I've said in this chamber before that we cannot expect to always kick the notion of attracting and retaining the best teachers down the road and expect to keep and retain the best teachers. Teachers approach their careers just like any of us do. When I'm looking for a job in accounting, I'm looking for, I'm going to get the most bang for my buck. Teachers the same way. We need to start treating them like the, the smart and educated folks that they are if we want to keep them, retain them here and see them here for the long term. Because the best teachers that I had growing up, they've all moved away. We need to support our police departments, our, you know, we have in Nashua, I believe, a very adequate police department. And they've bolstered at the request of the residents in Ward Seven their presence significantly in Crown Hill at least over the past few years. They're very responsive to even the silly little pithy neighborhood concerns that we have. Somebody speeding down my road, we can get an officer out within five minutes. That's the sort of community-oriented policing that I like. And I just feel that bolstering those services that we have, putting them up and continuing to ensure that they thrive should be the most pressing thing for our city. Everything else can come on after.
A lot of issues. Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. We will take up nominations after we're done interviewing all four candidates.
All right, thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you very much for yours. Okay, next we have Bob Resch. Bob is joining us via Zoom tonight. So, Mr. Resch, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, the board. My knee, thank you for allowing me to do this through Zoom. As the saying goes, I wasn't born in New Hampshire, but I couldn't wait to get here. I was born in New York City and spent the first 39 years of my life there. I had a New Yorker's view of the world. I had a New Yorker's view of the world. New York City, Hudson River, vast wasteland, Pacific Ocean. I went to school in the New York City School System and I graduated with a bachelor's degree in political science from a city college. And through a twist of fate, of course, I ended up in the medical profession. In 2003, I had a job offer from an MRI company in Maryland, and I decided to leave the city and find out what life was like beyond the Hudson. What I found stunned me. I found a place where I could live in a very comfortable way without paying a fortune in rent and taxes. After several years, I left that company for a new position in New England. At first, I lived in Massachusetts. And when my wife and I decided to stop renting and buy a home, we found Nashua. We found a very friendly city and state, not just friendly towards people, but friendly towards business as well. In the years we have lived in Nashua, my wife and I have seen numerous new businesses open and new housing being built. A few months ago, my wife and I went to the movies just over the border in Tinkerville. We saw a shopping mall that had once been filled, now had over half its stores vacant due to the economic restrictions imposed by Massachusetts. In driving home, we saw two new stores being built in Nashua. The difference is striking. Our nation is currently experiencing an economic downturn. And although Nashua hasn't been hit as hard as some other places, we are still feeling the crunch. I see the best way to ease the crisis is with careful government spending and incentives for new businesses. When we grow our economy, we grow our community. The New Hampshire advantage is real. We aren't called the Gate City just because of our location as the entry in New Hampshire. We are a gateway for a freer way of life. And if you choose me to be Alderman for Ward Seven, maintaining that freedom for our citizens and our state's advantage will consistently be at the forefront of my decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Rush? Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, um, Madam President. Mr. Rush, uh, thank you for, for applying. I, I have actually two questions. I'll start with the one that I've asked everybody else so far. What are your views on the asphalt manufacturing company?
Well, although I do feel that there is a necessity for new business brought into our city, I don't feel that the location for the asphalt manufacturing facility is the proper location for it. As was pointed out before, with my, uh, the speaker who preceded me, it's not something that the residents there want to wake up to smelling every day. I think that we can find a better use for that property, a better way to bring jobs in than to have something like that which can ultimately be toxic to the residents in the long run.
Uh, thank you.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you very much. I do have one other question for you. You were, you know, very thoughtful in discussing the economic downturn and careful government spending and, and et cetera. And I know, I don't know how long you've been here in New Hampshire, but are you aware that New Hampshire is a Dillon State and sometimes as Board of Aldermen, although we may want to do something, we can't do it unless we've had legislation approval from the state of New Hampshire, as we are a Dillon State?
Yes, I am aware of that. I've been in Nashua for eight years now.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for applying, Mr. Rush. We have not met at all. I don't know you at all, so I'm trying to find a little bit more out about you. But I'm going to start with the question I asked the other two, just because I want to be very consistent in, in questioning each person. And what do you think about keeping or not keeping the Keith Auditorium at Elm Street?
I don't believe it's actually a necessity at this point. I figure, I feel that with the Court Street Auditorium and with the new Art Center that's opening up, we can find a better use for that space or even to sell that space and to use that money in conjunction with private funds to enhance the Court Street Auditorium.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions for Mr. Rush? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Same questions as I asked for Mr. Senate. Why you, why now?
Well, as Alderman Moran pointed out, not only do we require people who have been on the board for a, a long time, for their knowledge, their wisdom, their experience, we also require fresh eyes, fresh perspective, fresh blood. I have not served in government in New Hampshire or Nashua. And I feel that I do have, although I do have experience serving in local government and, and school government, and I feel that a new, fresh set of eyes, a new way of looking at things, someone who is not beholden to anyone can be a very good boost to the current board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
Mr. Rush, thank you for putting your name forward. I just wanted to get an idea of what your experiences in the neighborhoods you'd be representing are. Do you have, have you spoken to any of the other candidates in any of the capacities that they've served in? Have you volunteered with any organizations? Anything like that?
No, to be honest with you, I have not spoken with any of the other candidates. And due to my past workload, which has now been alleviated quite a bit since I work from home now, I will, I will have much more time than I would have in the past. Which is why I'm actually putting my name in now and have not done so before.
Okay, thank you for your answer and your willingness to get more involved.
Anyone else have questions for Mr. Rush? Okay, so we're going to take up nominations after we interview our last candidate, so stay with us. Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, thank you very much. And, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. I live on Elgin Street. I've been a resident of Ward Seven since 2002. Many of those years, June Corone has been my representative on the board, and I always voted for her because I believe she did, did a great job. I also know Tim Senate, and he has always been a very hard worker, very dedicated at Ward Seven. So you have some great candidates for Ward Seven. And I think they'll, they'll do a great job there. Both believe in good government. And even though we have changes, I want to speak a little bit about what Alderman Moran said about having changes. It's, um, June Corone has about 10 years' experience, but some of these new people and these new changes, change is sometimes not, not good because you don't have people who actually believe in government that are in government. But you do have people like Tim Senate who, who do believe in government and, and do a good job. So I think it's very careful about change. Some change is good, some change is not good. But, um, I actually want to, um, remove my name from consideration because I think June has done a, a good job. I would urge you to vote for June. I, I know Tim, Tim is also a very good candidate too. So I hope that helps you, uh, get closer, uh, it gives you, makes your job easier choosing a candidate. But whoever you choose, um, you know, I'm going to help them at Ward Seven because we, we, we do have a team down there at Ward Seven, especially on Election Day, and everybody works together. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino.
Yep.
We appreciate you coming. Okay. So Alderman Dow.
Yes, um, I'd like to nominate June Karen to fill the Ward.
Alderman Dow?
Yep.
I'd like to open up the floor for nominations.
No. That's what you were doing. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to open up the floor for nominations.
If I may, before you do that.
Alderman, come on.
Just a quick question. I noticed there's a hefty-sized audience on Zoom, and I wondered if it would be appropriate for us to allow a period of public comment before we decide to vote?
We don't have public comment at this meeting this evening.
Could I make a motion to allow public comment?
You can make a motion.
Then I would like to do so, please.
Motion is to allow public comment for this process. Alderman Lopez.
I generally like to be the sole agent of chaos, but in this particular case, I would find it helpful to hear what members of the public who live in the neighborhoods that we would be appointing someone for, because I find this to be a very unusual circumstance where there was an election, they voted, and now we're, because of the resignation of Alderman Cathy, we're in a position to make a decision for people who's, like, personally, I don't live in their neighborhoods. So I would be supportive just to kind of understand what the sentiment is there.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Camo, be with you. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I usually do vote for public comment, and I do think it's a good idea to get some input from Ward Three. My only concern is that when we put out the agenda, it did not have public comment. So some of the, um, the candidates that are here won't have necessary representation. I still want to hear from the public, but I want to make that very clear that, um, it wasn't on the agenda. So there may be some people that just didn't bother to come, that may have come if they knew it was on the agenda, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration when we place our vote. So, thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I will not be entertained of thought of public comment. I usually want to hear exactly what the public has to say, but in this particular case we have, this meeting was to nominate candidates. I have great fear, if we opened it up for public comment, we will hear much more, not so much about the candidates, but perhaps other different things that could be better addressed at a full Board of Aldermen meeting, when those particular subject matters are taken up at the particular board. But I'll go by the wishes of the board, but keep that in mind in your vote, that unless somebody wants to make an amendment to the motion, that the comments must be on to specific nominations. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, again, I would favor a lot of times public comment, but in this instance, since we're selecting at Ward Seven, Alderman, I, I think the only people that we should hear input from are people who live in Ward Seven. Otherwise, I think we're going to get into personalities and conflicts that, that are only going to elongate this meeting without a due cause.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Usually I'm for public comment as well. Last week I made a comment that we should have had public comment on the streets, the Franklin Street, uh, issue, but in this case, people have had, did not know that they were going to be able to speak tonight, so some of them may not have come. And they've had opportunities to send us stuff, and some people have. And, I mean, that's just as good as any public comment. So, thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Just to be safe, I'd like to amend the motion to allow for public comment restricted just to this topic and only from Ward Seven residents.
Okay, so you've heard the amended motion. Discussion on that. Alderman Gueye.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a question, how are we vetting public comment? Are we asking for addresses and checking to make sure they live in the ward?
The honors is in your hands. They do have to get their address. Yeah, they do have to get their address.
Alderman Camo.
Thank you, Madam President. I would support an amendment to restrict comment to just the item before us. I don't know how, you know, unless we're sitting here with Google Maps open, that we're going to verify by the time people start talking whether they live in the ward or not. So I, I would prefer that the amendment just restrict the topic and not so much the geography. There's an argument to be made also that even though it is Ward Seven, our Alderman, decisions that that Alderman's going to make affect everyone who lives in the city. So I'd still like to hear an opinion if somebody has one from a different ward, as long as it's on this topic only.
I'd like to withdraw my amendment and offer the amendment of only on this topic, Ward Seven candidates.
Okay, so the motion is to allow for public comment only on the topic before us right now. Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Mosher.
Yes.
You have 11 yeas and 3 nays. And that motion carries. So we will open up for public comment on the subject of Ward Seven Aldermen only, please. So is there any, no one in the audience except the candidates. Is there anyone online who wishes to give public comment on the topic of Ward Seven? Ald, uh, Lou Juris. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Lou Juris here, 56 Hayne Street in Nashua. And this is a, maybe for me, a difficult, uh, I guess, discussion, a difficult choice. And I know both candidates very well. It was good testimony tonight, good questioning, and I would support Mr. Senate at this point to carry the remainder of the term. And, uh, thank you for your time. And I want to thank all the candidates, June, Ray, Mr. Rush, and Tim for putting their names forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia Prince. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Sonia Prince, 49 Tough Drive. I do hope that you support either Mr. Senate or Ray Guarino. I think they're both very qualified, very involved in the community. They know their stuff, and it's refreshing to see people who are that excited about coming to our Alderman meetings. So I hope you consider those candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Beth.
Oh, hi. Hi, Beth Scare, 111 East Hobart Street. I wanted to say I really miss John Cathy on the board. I'm sorry that we lost him. He did a great job. And I think Tim and June are, you know, I'm happy that they're running. I think I have really good relationships with both of them and, um, but I really, I would really love to see you point Bob Rush. I loved hearing about his conservative, fiscal conservative outlook. The city's going to be in deep trouble with property taxes shooting up with, as the commercial values fall and residential property values go up. And we need a lifeline here. So please consider appointing Bob. Thanks.
Thank you. Next we have Matthew Guthro.
Thank you, Matthew Guthro, 104 Fawn Lane here in Nashua. I wouldn't be as presumptuous to assume that my comments would sway anyone from voting for the candidate in which you met this evening. I believe all the candidates that spoke out here, I applaud them for volunteering to come out here and step forward and, uh, and, and putting themselves in this position to help assist our government during this time of need. I just think that, um, at the end of the day, this should be settled by the voters in a special election. And I know that the charter has been changed recently to reflect that. And I hope in the future that we have a review of our charter to see if we could put unique situations like this back in the hands of the voters. I appreciate you allowing comment for this, and, uh, thank you for your continued support of our residents here in Nashua.
Thank you. Allison Dyer.
Hi, Allison Dyer, 9 Squire Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of the previous speaker, Mr. Guthro, and, um, again, say that I thought everyone did a wonderful job with their, um, speeches this evening. And I would have to say I would love to see June Karen come back. I think she has been great for the city of Nashua in the time that she was there, and I think that she's a, um, contains a broad spectrum of views, and I think that would be good for the residents of Nashua again. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to give public comment on the Ward Seven nominee, nomination? Seeing none? Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to close public comment. And right now I'm going to open up the floor for nominations. Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to nominate June Karen to fill the Ward Seven seat. The first thing... The first thing we should all be thinking about is why are we here this evening? We're here to select the best candidate to fill the Ward Seven slot. All the candidates are good, hardworking people, and it's no reflection against any of them. But I've known a number of Aldermen in my twelve years serving on the Board of Aldermen, and I have never seen an Alderman that works as hard as Alderman Karen. She is in a number of things and works hard to support all the people in her ward. And so many people in her ward that I talked to that were shocked that she didn't run again. And I think it's probably a fair bet that if she had run this last term, that she would have won since she'd been elected five previous times. So also, I think it's a good idea to have a diverse board, new people and people with experience and knowledge because, you know, the new people learning every day and can hear what has happened in the past and get that, take that extensive background into consideration. So I just think that we need that mix of experience. And certainly, June Karen with forty-five years working for the city and ten years on the Board of Aldermen and all of the different things she's involved in, senior center, going back to school, just Lions Club, a number of things that I think that she presents the best person that can represent the people in Ward Seven. And I think that's why we're here this evening, and I think that's the way we ought to go. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm happy to put into nomination Tim Senate. I have known Tim for the last couple of years as a hardworking ward moderator, somebody who has a lot of interest in local government, in politics, particularly here in Nashua, obviously. He cares a lot about his neighborhood. And he's involved in the goings-on in his neighborhood. And I think that he will offer a fresh perspective to this board. I have worked well with June in the past, and I think that she is, would do a great job as well. But I think we need to look to the future. And I think that Tim will offer us that path forward. And so I hope that my colleagues will join me and support Tim this evening.
Any other nominations? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to close nominations.
Motion is to close nominations. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yays and one nay.
And that motion carries.
It can't be right.
I'm sorry?
It could be thirteen years. It could be thirteen to one.
I'm sorry.
Oh, thirteen to one, yeah.
It is thirteen to one. Thank you, Alderman Bolton. My apologies.
Okay, so I'm going to ask now that we, when we, as we vote, just the name of the person that you want to vote for. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
June Karen.
Alderman Sullivan.
June Karen.
Alderman Cleve.
June Karen.
Alderman Moran.
Tim Senate.
Alderman Lopez.
Tim Senate.
Alderman Jettie.
June Karen.
Alderman Clemmons.
Tim Senate.
Alderwoman Kelly.
June Karen.
Alderman Camo.
June Karen.
Alderman Dow.
June Karen.
Alderman Gueye.
June Karen.
Alderman Tebow.
Tim Senate.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Tim Senate.
Alderman Wiltshire.
June Karen.
You have nine for June Karen, and you have five for Tim Senate.
So the votes go to June Karen. Ms. Karen, would you please come up and be sworn in?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as the Ward Seven Aldperson for the city of Nashua according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I will.
Thank you.
June, I'm shaking your hand for the TV.
Your seat is open.
You're an Alderman now. You got to sit down.
Alderman Dow.
June, this is the second time I've had to tell you, go into your seat, please.
You can sit in my seat, June.
No, you have a seat.
Oh, we have a seat for her. That's right. Never mind.
Alderman Karen, we have good news and bad news. The good news is you've been elected to the Ward Seven, Alderman. The bad news is you have a meeting following this one.
Isn't having a meeting like celebrating?
Alderman O'Brien, do I have a motion?
Yes, you do, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the July 25th, 2022 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yays and zero nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:19 PM.